Good evening, welcome to the Cortez City Council Workshop Special Meeting. Today is Tuesday, June 22nd, 2021 and it's 6:30 PM. I'll call this meeting to order. This evening we're going to be interviewing candidates for the Public Arts Advisory Committee. We have four candidates in the building and we're going to be meeting with them. They're going to introduce themselves and we're going to ask them a series of questions. Good evening, welcome to the Cortez City Council Workshop Special Meeting. Today is Tuesday, June 22nd, 2021 and it's 6:30 PM. I'll call this meeting to order. This evening we're going to be interviewing candidates for the Public Arts Advisory Committee. We have four candidates in the building and we're going to be meeting with them. They're going to introduce themselves and we're going to ask them a series of questions. Good evening, welcome to the Cortez City Council Workshop Special Meeting. Today is Tuesday, June 22nd, 2021.
Okay, I just didn't know because usually we have a set list of questions and we were just handed this in the last few moments, so.
This evening we're going to be interviewing candidates for the Public Arts Advisory Committee. We have four candidates.
Yeah, if one of you guys wanted to just ask the same question.
We're going to be meeting with them, they're going to introduce themselves and we're going to ask them a series of questions. Good evening, welcome to the Cortez City Council Workshop Special Meeting.
Okay, I just didn't know because usually we have a set list of questions and we were just handed this in the last few moments, so. We're going to keep to the set list of questions, correct? Yeah, if one of you guys wanted to just ask the same question.
Hi everybody, my name is Ty Rogers. My address is 738.
Okay, I just didn't know because usually we have a set list of questions and we were just handed this in the last few moments, so. We're going to keep to the set list of questions, correct?
Low income, first generation.
Yeah, if one of you guys wanted to just ask the same question.
But my background is Cortez. My address is 738.
Okay, I just didn't know because usually we have a set list of questions and we were just handed this in the last few moments, so. We're going to keep to the set list of questions, correct?
Low income, first generation.
Yeah, if one of you guys wanted to just ask the same question.
But my background is Cortez. My address is 738.
Okay, I just didn't know because usually we have a set list of questions and we were just handed this in the last few moments, so. We're going to keep to the set list of questions, correct?
Low income, first generation.
Yeah, if one of you guys wanted to just ask the same question.
But my background is Cortez. My address is 738.
So my question is kind of similar to the mayor's, but I guess what perspective and skills would you give us?
In addition to having a master's in art, I also have a bachelor's in design. But I just have like some experience, that's not exactly.
Yeah, if one of you guys wanted to just ask the same question.
But my background is Cortez. My address is 738.
So my question is kind of similar to the mayor's, but I guess what perspective and skills would you give us?
In addition to having a master's in art, I also have a bachelor's in design. But I just have like some experience, that's not exactly.
Yeah, if one of you guys wanted to just ask the same question.
But my background is Cortez. My address is 738. Welcome Mr. Rogers.
So my question is kind of similar to the mayor's, but I guess what perspective and skills would you give us?
In addition to having a master's in art, I also have a bachelor's in design. But I just have like some experience, that's not exactly.
Yeah, if one of you guys wanted to just ask the same question.
I don't see that my background is Cortez. My address is 738. Welcome Mr. Rogers.
So my question is kind of similar to the mayor's, but I guess what perspective and skills would you give us?
In addition to having a master's in art, I also have a bachelor's in design. But I just have like some experience, that's not exactly.
Yeah.
I don't see that I'm a red shirt. So I don't have my address. I'm a red shirt.
So my question is kind of similar to the mayor's, but I guess what perspective and skills would you give us?
In addition to having a master's in art, I also have a bachelor's in design. But I just have like some experience, that's not exactly.
Yeah.
I don't see that I'm a red shirt. So I don't have my address. I'm a red shirt.
My question is, what is your favorite aspect about you? I think it's what perspective and skills would you give us?
In addition to having a master's in art, I also have a bachelor's in design. But I just have like some experience, that's not exactly.
Yeah.
I don't see that I'm a red shirt. So I don't have my address. I'm a red shirt.
So my question is kind of similar to the mayor's, but I guess what perspective and skills would you give us?
In addition to having a master's in art, I also have a bachelor's in design. But I just have like some experience, that's not exactly.
Yeah.
I don't see that I'm a red shirt. So I don't have my address. I'm a red shirt.
So my question is kind of similar to the mayor's, but I guess what perspective and skills would you give us?
In addition to having a master's in art, I also have a bachelor's in design. But I just have like some experience, that's not exactly.
Yeah.
I don't see that I'm a red shirt. So I don't have my address. I'm a red shirt.
So my question is kind of similar to the mayor's, but I guess what perspective and skills would you give us?
In addition to having a master's in art, I also have a bachelor's in design. But I just have like some experience, that's not exactly.
Yeah.
I don't see that I'm a red shirt. So I don't have my address. I'm a red shirt.
So my question is kind of similar to the mayor's, but I guess what perspective and skills would you give us?
In addition to having a master's in art, I also have a bachelor's in design. But I just have like some experience, that's not exactly.
Yeah.
I don't see that I'm a red shirt. So I don't have my address. I'm a red shirt.
So my question is kind of similar to the mayor's, but I guess what perspective and skills would you give us?
In addition to having a master's in art, I also have a bachelor's in design. But I just have like some experience, that's not exactly.
Yeah.
Now being looking from the foundation of the city council, do you see any... 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 Now being looking from the foundation of the city council, do you see any... 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 Now being looking from the foundation of the city council, do you see any... 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 Now being looking from the foundation of the city council, do you see any... 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 Now being looking from the foundation of the city council, do you see any... 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 Now being looking from the foundation of the city council, do you see any... 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 Okay, for what perspective and skills would you give us? Do you see any... 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 Okay, for what perspective and world would you bring us? Do you see any... Do you see any... Do you see any... Do you see any... So, do you like... Do you like... And... I've got to look at everything. Make this stuff. For what perspective and world would you bring us? Do you see any... Do you see any... Do you see any... Do you see any... So, do you like... Do you like... And... Who asked my question? For what perspective and world would you bring us? Do you see any... Do you see any... A little bit about that? I mean, I think it's... So... Do you like... And... I think it's... Who asked my question? What is your question? Do you see any... Do you see any... A little bit about that? I mean, I think it's... So... Do you like... And... I think it's... Who asked my question? What is your question? Do you see any... Do you see any... My question today is, what is your favorite aspect? So... Hi. Do you like... And... I think it's... Right across me. For what... Do you see any... My question today is, what is your favorite aspect? So... Hi. Do you like... And... I think it's... Right across me. For what... Do you see any... My question today is, what is your favorite aspect? So... Hi. Do you like... And... I think it's... Right across me. For what... Do you see any... My question today is, what is your favorite aspect? So... So... Hi. Do you like... And... I think it's... Right across me. For what... Do you see any... Do you see any... Do you see any... Six years, since you've been making it's one of the requirements to the city council. It's been taken by the county's district store. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Since you've been making it's one of the requirements to the city council. It's been taken by the county's district store. Thank you. So... So... Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. For what... Do you see any... Since you've been making it's one of the requirements to the city council. It's been taken by the county's district store. Thank you. So... So... Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. For what... Do you see any... Do you see any... Do you see any... Do you see any... So... So... Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. For what... Do you see any... Do you see any... Do you see any... Do you see any... So... So... Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. For what... Do you see any... Do you see any... Do you see any... Do you see any... So... So... Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. For what...
Thank you for coming. It's been exciting to have you. She knew you were interested in this, so I'll just ask the same question and ask it to everybody else. Do you see any potential conflicts of interest? So, I'm sure what's come up to work is how do you approach these issues? Thank you for coming. It's been exciting to have you. She knew you were interested in this, so I'll just ask the same question and ask it to everybody else. Do you see any potential conflicts of interest? So, I'm sure what's come up to work is how do you approach these issues? Thank you for coming. It's been exciting to have you. She knew you were interested in this, so I'll just ask the same question and ask it to everybody else. Do you see any potential conflicts of interest? So, I'm sure what's come up to work is how do you approach these issues? Thank you for coming. It's been exciting to have you. She knew you were interested in this, so I'll just ask the same question and ask it to everybody else. Do you see any potential conflicts of interest? So, I'm sure what's come up to work is how do you approach these issues? Thank you for coming. It's been exciting to have you. She knew you were interested in this, so I'll just ask the same question and ask it to everybody else. Do you see any potential conflicts of interest? So, I'm sure what's come up to work is how do you approach these issues? Well, um, I've been around, uh, helping the community for about two or three years, um, quite a few years for this, uh, area. And so, um, I like getting involved in the community after the pandemic. I'm sorry, I also have a DJ playing Tuesday night on SJB. Some self-division. Well, um, I've been around, uh, helping the community for about two or three years, um, quite a few years for this, uh, area. And so, um, I like getting involved in the community after the pandemic. I'm sorry, I also have a DJ playing Tuesday night on SJB. Some self-division. Well, um, I've been around, uh, helping the community for about two or three years, um, quite a few years for this, uh, area. Mostly Seattle, Seattle, and so, um, I like getting involved in the community after the pandemic. I'm sorry, I also have a DJ playing Tuesday night on SJB. Some self-division. Well, um, I've been around, uh, helping the community for about two or three years, um, quite a few years for this, uh, area. Mostly Seattle, Seattle, and so, um, I like getting involved in the community after the pandemic. I'm sorry, I also have a DJ playing Tuesday night on SJB. Some self-division. Well, um, I've been around, uh, helping the community for about two or three years, um, quite a few years for this, uh, area. Mostly Seattle, Seattle, and so, um, I like getting involved in the community after the pandemic. I'm sorry, I also have a DJ playing Tuesday night on SJB. Some self-division. Well, um, I've been around, uh, helping the community for about two or three years, um, quite a few years for this, uh, area. Mostly Seattle, Seattle, and so, um, I like getting involved in the community after the pandemic. I'm sorry, I also have a DJ playing Tuesday night on SJB. Some self-division. Well, um, I've been around, uh, helping the community for about two or three years, um, quite a few years for this, uh, area. Mostly Seattle, Seattle, and so, um, I like getting involved in the community after the pandemic. I'm sorry, I also have a DJ playing Tuesday night on SJB. Some self-division. Thank you. Uh, you may have already answered. Compared to those, um, so what perspective and skills would bring you to work? Well, let's see. Well, I 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 see. Thank you. Uh, you may have already answered. Compared to those, um, so what perspective and skills would bring you to work? Well, let's see. Well, let's see. Well, I 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 see. Thank you. Uh, you may have already answered. Compared to those, um, so what perspective and skills would bring you to work? Well, let's see. Well, let's see. Well, I 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 see. Thank you. Uh, you may have already answered. Compared to those, um, so what perspective and skills would bring you to work? Well, let's see. Well, let's see. Well, I 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 see. Thank you. Uh, you may have already answered. Compared to those, um, so what perspective and skills would bring you to work? Well, let's see. Well, let's see. Well, I 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 see. My question for you today is, uh, what is your favorite aspect of the current Cortez arts culture?
Wow. Um, well, I guess the one thing that was obvious to me when we moved here was, um, number one, the, all the murals. I just thought that was great. I really liked the, the Harvest mural. That's, uh, my favorite one, I think, so.
Um, Councilman Rainey, um, I'm curious, what, uh, aspect do you feel would be the most important focus for the art, Arts Committee at this point?
Well, I, I feel like I'm so new in town. I don't, I don't know. Um, so, uh, I don't know what else to say. I, I've just, what, been to two or three meetings and that's about it. So, um, I'm not sure. I mean, the neat thing is, we have a whole bunch of new members and it's a way to make, uh, a lot of things happen, so.
Well, there's no wrong answer for that question, but thank you. I certainly understand.
Thanks. In the Arts Committee, you'd be making funding recommendations to the City Council. Do you see any potential conflicts of interest and how, how would you deal with those if you saw them?
Um, well, you know, I don't, I don't see any conflict of interests, um, but I'm really big on transparency. And if there was one crop up, you know, I would make the rest of the council aware of that, committee, I should say, aware of that. And I would just step, step back and, um, excuse myself from the, the conflict, I guess I'd say.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you, David. Appreciate your coming here tonight and letting us know a little bit about yourself.
Sure, that was easy.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't have to do any integral calculus or anything like that.
Yeah. That, that hammer looks kind of interesting. That might make good, uh, gavel.
I've made a lot of spoons with this. I use, that's used to help carve out the spoon.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you for coming tonight.
You bet.
See, Matthew Flynn was our fifth, uh, candidate, but he's not able to be here tonight. Uh, we have his, uh, his, uh, letter of interest and his qualifications and he'll be contacting us later on. Brenda, did you have anything to say tonight?
I think you have.
Just go up to the podium and introduce yourself and tell us about your qualifications.
All right. My name is Brenda Van Kuren. I'm a resident of Cortez. I live in the 81321 zip code. Thank you very much for taking the time and interviewing everybody. I very much appreciate it. Uh, so, we still have some formative steps to take. I did my best to help prepare everybody so that they, um, would come before you. And I really appreciate your question about the vision that anybody has here for this area, not just the city of Cortez, but also for the county. And so, I would put the same question back to you. And I'm deeply interested in knowing what your thought and your vision is. What do you need an arts advisory committee to do for you and for the city, for the community, for the surrounding areas? I really would like you to reflect on that and think about it. Cause I could tell you that, uh, and this is only my opinion, and we do have a diverse set of opinions on this committee as it comes together, and I very much appreciate that. So, we don't have group think, which keeps us stuck. But, for seven members to come together and simply focus on mural maintenance, that is not a wise use of time for anyone, really. Because you could delegate that to Parks and Recreation or Public Works. And so, my thought is, what is the next step? When the mural committee members got together the first time to put together these murals, they had a vision in mind. They wanted to do something that was beneficial aesthetically for the city and something that also maybe had some indirect financial or economic benefit. So, what is the next step? Certainly, murals can be reworked. Uh, they could be replaced with 3D or 2D or some sort of assemblage thereof structures. Uh, we have some opportunities out in the public spaces like in the city parks. So, there are plenty of things that a seven-member committee can tackle together. And so, I would say, use this resource wisely. You have the power and authority to delegate some tasks to the committee. So, think about what that should be. What should it look like? What does the city want to invest, not just now, but for the future? And so, we have an opportunity to grow and take it in a good direction. And so, what I'm asking for next is, um, I would like to have an audience with the city manager so that we can get some of the formative steps done, get a city staff member appointed as city liaison so that we can move forward. And we have a protocol to tackle anything that we need to. And so, that I could even, um, have, uh, Michael Green help us with some of his advisory, uh, support. So, I just need a door opened. And, um, what I'm trying to do is help prepare the committee for the future and for succession. So, that's what, um, I think is a, a wise step. Thank you very much. I appreciate it. By the way, Matt had to, um, step back and so, he's, uh, got some work assignments. So, he has, uh, withdrawn his application. So, just to, just to be clear on that. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Brenda. Thank you for sharing that, your vision with us, also our responsibilities as a city and the city council, uh, in terms of the Arts Advisory Committee. So, that reminds us that we, we have a duty also to the arts. Thank you. Appreciate that. Uh, see, as Brenda mentioned, uh, Matthew Flynn has pulled his, uh, application. Okay.
Can I, before we move on, Mayor, this is, Yazi, before we move on to the next topic, can we chat about the, like, the year appointments or, real quick, um, did anybody else read that section about, like, either reappointing so that we get back on a regular schedule? Is that basically what was implied in your letter?
I will write that. Yes, I'm sort of structured. And so, and you're what you need in the second Wednesday of every month now. And so, and then you'll have special needs added. So, if you'd like to get, get back like that.
So, how would we get back onto the, do you mean, like, term limits for?
So, similar to City Council, the way that you give two-year term or four-year term, type of that?
Well, but some of the boards have three-year terms. P and Z and Parks and Rec.
Right. So, in the memo, I had addressed an issue that we have now, now that we're down to two members. We don't have staggering membership. We've got a little bit of stagger in our membership simply by virtue of having a student candidate who serves a one-year term only. And the logical, uh, starting and stopping point is April, uh, because students will be graduating out, uh, in May. And so, April to April is a logical start and stop point for, uh, for student members. Uh, as far as the two remaining members, Cher and I, uh, I don't exactly recall. I think that Cher's term ends, uh, in October this year. Mine would be March next year. And so, there's a little bit of stagger right there. If you want to impose another staggering structure with the remaining members, you could do that and make your determination, uh, and set someone up for a one-year term, someone else for a two-year term, maybe someone else for a three-year term. You might want to get their input on that. Or, you can simply say, everybody's appointed as of June, two-year terms. And so, you're going to have attrition. You're going to have turnover. Some people just can't finish out a full term. And so, then we need to find someone to come in and, uh, and fill it, fill in for the, the remainder of the term. So, it's up to you. You can decide how much you want to do the thinking on that.
Is that the responsibility or the purview of council to determine the lengths of the terms for a committee such as this? Or is it, um, up to the committee itself?
The organs, I'm sorry.
Council has moved to take more control over the committees, um, by the interviews you're doing, instead of just, hey, we recommend you appoint these people. Um, I don't remember, and I'm looking at Linda, that it's set up in the, in the code book for staggered terms. Um, I'd have to go back there and look.
Yes, there is a setup for the, and that is in the memo. The original, when, when the committee was brought together in 2017, there were a certain number of members who were appointed for one year, certain number of members appointed for two-year, and certain number of members for a three-year. And I believe it was two each. And then, we had the, uh, student member who was appointed for one year.
Needing five, we should, we should go back to that and somebody should get a one-year term, somebody should get a two-year term. Um, you've got one, two, three people here. You could ask them right now while they're here, um, what's their preference to serve and see what they say. Um, and then the terms would start from the date of appointment, whenever that is, and continue on.
Yeah, that was a suggestion I was going to make. Maybe have, ask the, the people who've applied and maybe they will sort of self-select first before we have to determine if it's a two or a one, for example. But it's just, I mean, you, I'm sure, know, I mean, it's just super helpful to have members who-
Right. For continuity purposes.
Absolutely.
Yeah, you don't want everybody dropping off all at once, although it can happen, just like with the COVID pandemic. We had a lot of attrition, right? You know, pretty much at once, it seemed. So, Samantha, would you like to be appointed for a three, two, or one-year term?
I don't have a preference.
No preference? And how about David?
Oh, I don't know. Um, probably one or two years.
One or two years? Okay.
Before you know it, one year's up.
Sure is.
So, I'd probably say two years.
Okay, two years. Okay, two years. And Samantha has no preference. So, someone needs to take up the three years. If, Samantha, if you're okay with that, would you be okay with a three-year term?
I don't.
Okay, wonderful. And I also, one more thing to say, Samantha, and this is about Samantha who is a, an active artist here. This issue of conflict of interest, we will address it in a meeting, especially because we need to have an understanding of what, what does that mean in the first place. Samantha, who is a professional artist, should have the right to exhibit and sell her work in this city. So, you do not have to not stop doing your work here in the city. As far as, um, getting any direct financial benefit from the city's investment in some sort of art project, then we could probably do a recusal set where you're not, or step where you're not, uh, voting. And so, we need to draw some lines around that and be really clear. We don't want to have any issues with conflict of interest. So, Matt, or, uh, Mr. Dobere, I'm really glad that you brought that up. We will definitely address that.
Conflict of interest is, at least in the city, Linda and I were looking, it's described in one place in the charter, is if the decision is going to bring you financial interest, that, you know, benefit, you're going to make money off the piece of art, or you're going to have some sort of benefit off it. You shouldn't probably be just making the decision. You should recuse yourself. That's pretty much the most, um, the only definition. It applies to council, but it, it's a good definition across the board. Um, you know, if you're going to financially benefit from something, you have a conflict of interest. Um, other than that, we don't have a lot of guidance as to what a conflict is. Um...
We've had a, a situation in the past where we asked one member who had the voting, uh, who had the, uh, power to vote, asked her to please step out. And then, we had a, we held our, our vote so that her vote didn't count. And it happens to be somebody who contributed to a piece of literature. And so, um, that, uh, the city contributed to. So, it's, it, it worked out that way. So, that's how we handled it. And again, we'll go over these sort of policies, uh, in our meeting when we get together again. Again, more formative steps. Okay, so you have someone who would, like, two years, and that's Dave Sullivan, or David, I'm sorry, I keep thinking Sullivan's pipes. David Ross, and then Samantha will take three years. And of course, the student member can only take one year. Ty left, and so, um-
I assume he would be located in one year.
You would have to ask him to, to know for sure. So, that would be the one. And I can follow up and, uh, I will email you, David Rainey, what his preference might be.
Well, we need to state that in our motion tonight. Can we appoint? Okay.
Uh, yeah, I think we should, yeah.
You are also welcome to reappoint Cher and me, if that helps you. If you want a, what, a start and a stop date, if it is going to be in the month of June, for everybody, if that makes sense to you. And so, I had provided, uh, Cher's and my letters of interest so that you could take a good look at the composition of the existing committee members. So.
Would that require another interview of Cher and, um, oh my God, I'm spacing her name.
Brenda.
Brenda, sorry.
And that's up to council, but they're already on the board.
Okay, I just wanted to clarify.
Yeah, I mean, if you guys want to interview them, you can. They already have terms. They've been appointed. Like she's saying, if you want to make them all June, you can reappoint them, but they are currently on the board. So, you, you're not needing to do that unless you want to. Also, it is not on the agenda tonight, so if you guys want to make that appointment tonight, we need to add them. But I do need to make sure that you know that it needs to be approved with their background checks completed. They can't be appointed to the board until that's done.
Linda, I believe that our background checks were done. And so-
If you, if you wanted-
I haven't heard that, no.
Uh, Eric had me fill out and complete the applications. And so, I was, I provided my social security-
No, no, not you, Brenda. The, the new members.
That's correct. There is that caveat. You've got to make sure that everybody passes the background screening, as per your hiring policy for the city.
Can, can we slow down a minute? If you want to interview everybody to make it fair, to make sure that you get the questions answered that you have from the, the returning people, there's nothing that says you just get rubber stamped back into the position. Maybe there's somebody on the board that needs to move on. Maybe you need to convey what your thoughts are and how this should be run. And so, I would be recommending, if you want to do everybody and start from scratch, you at least invite them back in, ask them what their answers to the questions are, and find out what terms they want us serve, to be fair to everybody. You can just leave them on there. You don't need to do this. But if you take the suggestion to sort of start from scratch again, I think everybody should be interviewed so you know what everybody thinks and is, and is it what you as a council want to see.
That's a fair approach, so.
And on reappointments, I think we're, um, we haven't really formalized this, but my recommendation would also be we-
Update the background check, make sure nothing's happened. Make sure.
And make sure nothing's happened in the several years they've been appointed. It seldom does, but that's just a, a good thing to do.
Candidates that were here, plus yourself, and the only one we haven't interviewed is Cher.
We haven't interviewed Brenda.
Correct. And she is not in favor of coming forward. She's just very uncomfortable with it. So, if there might be an accommodation for her to interview with you in another way, that's, that's something that you would need to consider.
Okay. All right.
I guess I would suggest then that we wait till the next meeting to, to the point, uh, do the appointment like is normal. And why are we getting feedback when we're turning our microphone?
Ms. Medina, I'm new. And, um, the outside factor, it's probably me. Um, there could be a chip in my head for what we know. Yeah.
Yeah, I, I think we should continue this conversation at the next workshop. Um, that way, we could figure out what length of term Ty was thinking. Um, and then, we could try to arrange to, to formal, do the formal process of interviewing the other two, uh, folks as well. And then, we can get back on track with what I believe you're expecting as well.
Okay.
And you would put it for an action item on the agenda following the workshop?
Yes, please.
Yes, thank you.
And we might be able to offer Zoom to the other-
Yeah, I think we could, should offer Zoom to the contestants that's, or candidate that's not available. So, so.
You are all invited to the next meeting. It will be the second Wednesday in July. That would be the 14th. It starts at 4:15 to 5:30. And so, please, please join us if you are able. Anything else of me? Do you need me anymore?
No.
Okay.
I have nothing.
Thank you so much.
Thank you for your invitation. Okay. Okay, uh, it's 7:25. Uh, we have five minutes for general council discussion. Are there any items we wanted to speak about tonight? See, nine, I adjourned this-
Mayor Mike, I have, I have two. That would be okay. Um, the first one is, I wanted to let council know, we're going to take the council picture, finally. Um, next, uh, council meeting, July 13th, at 5:30, we're going to touch base with you guys. Hope that'll work for everyone's time. We're going to take it in the park so that we can have a little bit of social distancing and be allowed to spread out a little bit and outside. But I just want to, please, put that on your calendar, if you would, that we're going to try to take the picture, City Council, so that we can get it on our wall. And I do understand that Amy is going to be with us to take that. So, we'll have eight people in the picture and, um, get that put on our wall before the year's up.
Thank you, Linda.
Yeah, I'm really glad we're going to get that done. Also, Sue Betts, um, I know we spoke about placing her picture on the wall with her, with her passing last year. Um, her family is working out a date to come to City Council so that they can hang that for us. And I hope we're going to have that done in August. Um, but we'll keep you guys in the loop on that. Um, the other item I have is, we're having a discussion with our, our marijuana, uh, owners of our businesses in Cortez to talk about the tax that you guys are talking about. Not necessarily the tax, but the, whatever we're wanting to do with that issue. And, um, Drew has had me call each of the owners as well as managers. We're meeting on July 7th or 8th. We've not firmed the time or date. Mayor Mike has spoke that he would like to attend that. And we could have one other council member attend that meeting. And I don't know if any of you have an interest or if you'd like to be there, but we would welcome one of you to come if you would like to. So, I'm just sort of putting it out there for you guys to talk about and let us know. It'll be in the day, probably about 10:00 AM on, one of those days, we've not firmed it yet. But I just wanted to let you guys know.
We'll discuss that.
Okay.
Second council person.
Mr. Mayor, I want to just recognize that, um, that, and maybe at some point, this could be, um, a little more formal during the meeting, but, um, a longstanding city council member of, of, um, high standards has passed away. And I think we probably should recognize, uh, Tom Butler at some point for all the work that he put in, uh, the city-
I was going to bring that up at the regular agenda.
Great.
Okay. Okay, uh, that, we adjourn the workshop and, uh, take a two-minute break. We will begin at 7:30 for a regular agenda.